Good evening, everybody. Hello. Good evening. Councilperson Folito. Calling Councilperson Folito. Okay.
Should I say the pledge?
No. I don't think I have to run this like a meeting like that. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody tonight and thanks for coming. What a process it's been. And I'll start off by just saying that I probably couldn't be more proud of a team that I've worked with here at City Hall. We started this process, I guess, a few months ago. And our task was to find 349 possible units for housing. And that was mandated by the state to all the cities in California. Some cities took different approaches. We took the approach of, okay, we're going to do this homework assignment, but we're also, on the same note, going to say, hey, state, please stop giving us all these mandates. And that's what we've done. And now, we're here to put out what we've come up with, and that's 349 possible sites with a 20% buffer in case the state wants to make some changes. And we did all of this without changing any of our zoning districts. That was a direct, I guess, directly because of so many people and the input that we've had. And from the very beginning, people coming to these meetings, and we listened, we tried our best, and we did it. We came up with 349 plus 20% without changing our zoning districts. So with that, I'd like to say congratulations to this team, to EMC, Anastasia, Andy, Catherine, Marnie, Brandon. Chip was in on some of the meetings, especially Councilperson Folito. We did it. So let's see how it goes tonight. We'll go through the demonstration, or the presentation, and then we'll have plenty of time for comments afterwards. Councilperson Folito?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being involved. This is something that has not been the easiest task, and it does present opportunities. And I call it opportunities because, in many cases, some of these sites could actually be very positive for the owners if they wanted to do something with them. I would like to say no one is going to tell these private owners that they have to do this. That is one of the most important things to know. It is our task to identify the possibilities, and then we go from there. And we hope that some of these will turn out to be positive for people to do. We hope that we do have the opportunity to provide some housing. I was reading, yesterday, I had the pleasure of being with third graders, and they were talking about the things that they wanted to do. And they were given a booklet about Carmel. And so I was looking through that booklet. I'm sure you've probably all seen it. I don't know where it is right now. But it talked about the fact that, at a certain point, about the 1970s, I believe it was, most of the people that came to Carmel originally, in the early 1900s, could not have afforded to have come at that point. And at one point, our community was 5,500 people, and then population dropped off. So throughout our short history of Carmel, we have managed to have more people in our village, which is sort of comforting to know. And I have looked on this housing element update as perhaps a way of growing our community in a good way. So I'm glad you're all here, and you'll get to see the exciting news that Marnie has for you on our PowerPoint. And I'd just like to say, our staff has worked so hard on this, and so long, and it's done such great research, that it has really been wonderful, as Bobby said, to work with this team.
They've been creative. They've been solution-oriented. And I think, I think we've done a good job. So Brandon, would you like to add?
Yeah, thank you, councilmembers, ad hoc committee. I just really want to say a quick thanks to everybody that's been involved so far, and echo what the councilmembers on the ad hoc committee have said, that I feel like we are at a really great crossroads right now. I'm always the process person. I'm talking about timing. So just, you know, where we're at in this process, we are close to a draft housing element update that then will get released, so we can start having the conversation at the full city council level. Because, as we all know, this is an ad hoc committee made up of two members of the bigger city council. These are citywide policies. So what we're talking about tonight, none of this is necessarily a foregone conclusion. Ultimately, it's going to go through the bigger public process, state input, review by the full city council, including councilmember Jeff Barron, who's here tonight, sitting up on the dice with councilmembers, because this was obviously noticed as a special meeting of the city council, even though it's an ad hoc committee. But that allows the rest of our city officials to join. We're going to have a few planning commissioners, I think, tonight as well, on the Zoom. I do also want to welcome, I see Congressman Sam Farr in the audience as well. Thank you for coming tonight, sir. But really, it's just about a thank you, and to let you know that we still have process to go. We have been moving along quickly, and that's for a very good reason. I see our illustrious mayor in the background, too. Hi, Mayor Potter. Not to call you out, I know he loves that. Really, that's my shtick, is that we have a lot of ways to go, even though it's a short amount of time, there's still a lot of public process. So we appreciate, every time we have one of these meetings, people get more and more involved. And I just want to thank everybody for that.
Thank you, Brandon. And this is also an opportunity for the residents to see what we're doing, and what we've come up with, and get their fingerprints on this piece of paper. So, Marnie, would you like to jump in? Or Anastasia, do you have anything to add?
I just want to echo all the comments here. It has been... I just want to echo the comments here, and it has been a pleasure working with everyone. And we are looking forward to getting public input tonight. And then, as your director mentioned, moving towards releasing the draft and having a larger conversation and discussion. So thank you very much.
So Marnie's got a wonderful presentation for us tonight. It's what, Marnie, five minutes long?
About that.
Okay. That was a joke for those that haven't been to previous meetings. It's definitely not a five-minute-long presentation. So bear with us. We've got a lot of good information to go over for you tonight. And there's some visuals up here, if you haven't seen them yet. There's some maps. We're going to talk a lot about opportunity sites. We're going to be talking about incentives. So grab a copy of the PowerPoint, grab a copy of the map, sit back, relax, grab your popcorn, and enjoy the presentation.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I just want to make sure everyone can see the screen okay. All right. And everyone can hear me okay. I'm going to try to stay close to my mic. As usual, we will be posting a copy of the PowerPoint online after the meeting. So if you don't pick up a copy tonight, just know that it will be available. There are some links and QR codes in the presentation as well, that you'll be able to access either during the meeting or later. So we're gonna just have a brief overview of what the housing element is, where it lives, how we got to this point. For those of you, maybe, that have been tracking with us through this process, some of this information will sound familiar. And then we're going to talk a little bit about demographics. So some of the data we've collected, some of the needs analysis that we've done to date. We're going to talk a little bit about policies and programs. And then we're going to talk about a preliminary list of sites that has the potential for new housing. And we're really looking for feedback on these sites, on additional ideas that you might have for sites. And then we'll wrap up with what the next steps are in our timeline as we continue through this process.
You know, before we get started, just a little, if everybody would make sure their telephones are off, so they don't go off during the meeting, it would be great. And feel free to go out and use the restroom if you need to during the meeting. Marnie's going to go through it, and then we'll have the questions and comments after that. And I am going to ask Marnie to go a little bit slower than she does sometimes, so that we get the gist of everything. Thank you.
So our housing element is part of our larger general plan. It is one of seven elements or chapters that are required to be included under state law. And the housing element is unique in that it is updated on a regular schedule. So we're currently on an eight-year cycle. Our last housing element was adopted in 2015, and it expires 2023. And then we're starting our new eight-year cycle, which will be 2023 to 2031. So this is where the housing plan for Carmel-by-the-Sea lives, within our general plan. And why we're updating our housing plan is because every eight years, the state of California, they look at the demographics of the state, they look at the supply of housing, and they make a determination on what the housing need is statewide. That housing need is then delivered down to individual regions throughout the state. And then those regions assign numbers to the cities and counties within their region. So we're in the AMBAG region, which is the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments. It includes Monterey and Santa Cruz counties, as well as the cities within those counties. So as a region, we received a little over 33,000 housing units to plan for. And Carmel-by-the-Sea specifically is planning for 349 of those units. So when we talk about affordable housing, we use a federal standard, which states that a household should not be paying more than 30% of their gross income on housing, including utilities. So when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about housing cost that does not exceed that 30% threshold. And what this does is, it provides a variety of housing types that allow workers to live closer to their jobs. It allows families to raise children in communities. It provides housing for family members with disabilities and residents to age in place. So we're looking at housing holistically for everyone, to meet the needs of all of those in our community, and those who desire to be in our community. Affordable housing also ties in with our climate action and implementation plans, and our climate goals to reduce greenhouse gases. Reducing commutes also contributes to that as well. So we're going to go a little bit into some of the data that we collected. So within Monterey County, the area median income is used to determine what the affordable categories are. So it's based on household size. So in, so specific to the county, the area median income for a one-person household is about $63,000. So if you make less than that, you fall into a lower-income category. If you make more than that, you're in a market-rate category. So what this table does is, it just shows you the typical income by affordability level. So of the 349 units that we're planning for, about half of those are in these lower-income levels. So you can see that, based on household size, what a person would be making, and what type of housing, affordable housing, they would need in order to stay within that 30% threshold that we talked about. So who lives in Carmel-by-the-Sea? Some of these statistics may not be too surprising. 87% of the community is non-Hispanic white. Most of the community, about 43%, is 65 or older. 12% of our population does have a disability. And of those, about half are 65 and older. Of our household type, 47% is made up of married couple, family households, and then another 40% with single-person households. Within our housing tenure, 57% of households own their homes in Carmel, and 43% are renters. With regards to housing availability, Carmel does have an approximately 50% vacancy rate. So we do have a pretty high second-home ownership rate in our community. And then with respect to household income, 62% of households do earn above the moderate income, which is greater than that area median income that we discussed. Approximately 28% of our current households are lower-income earners, so they're making between 50 and 80% of that area median income. So when we're looking at these demographics, we're looking at who's in our community, and what type of housing is needed to meet, to meet these needs. As part of our housing needs assessment, there's a couple other items that we're looking at. So we're looking at overcrowding, and we're also looking at cost burden. So we wanted to get a picture of what that looks like for the city of Carmel. So overcrowding is defined as a household with more than one person per room. And this does not include bathrooms and kitchens. Severe overcrowding includes units with more than 1.5 persons per room. So this is the definition. The data that we collected, approximately 6% of households are experiencing severe overcrowding. So that's 182 of your neighbors. And 10% of renter households are experiencing severe overcrowding. With respect to cost burden, cost burden is defined as households spending more than 30% of their gross income on housing. And that ties back to that previous slide. That's the goal. The goal is 30%. Severe cost burden is measured as more than 50%. So if you're spending more than half of your gross income on housing, you are considered a severely cost-burdened household. So in Carmel, that looks like 23% of households are cost-burdened, and 23 are severely cost-burdened. So this is almost half of our population here in Carmel, 46% that are experiencing a cost burden. Of those, 24% of renter households are cost-burdened, with 23% being severely. And the numbers are about the same for homeowners. About 23% are cost-burdened, and 22% severely cost-burdened. So this isn't really new information to us. We all know that the cost of housing, you know, is expensive in our area. And this data confirms, confirms that. With respect to housing type, again, you know, this, this data is not too surprising. 90% of the housing stock is single-family detached. We are a primarily residential community. And we have about 10% multifamily. With respect to housing permits issued, over the last housing cycle, we produced 18 new market-rate units within the community. And some of those were single-family homes that were constructed on vacant lots, and some of those were accessory dwelling units. So this gives you a little bit of a picture of the demographics of Carmel. And with respect to medium home value comparison, so this, this data is, again, probably not surprising to many, but it is a little, it's a little concerning when we're talking about affordable housing. In Carmel-by-the-Sea, we've had a 59% increase in median home value, which, again, that contributes to the cost burden that many folks in our community are experiencing. With regards to rents, for our, for our renters, this is a comparison of the average rent in Carmel. This data was collected in March of this year. And this is compared to fair-market rents that is put out by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So you can see, you know, at the studio level, we're slightly above the fair-market rent. But as you get into the one, two, three bedrooms, the cost is significantly higher than the Another aspect of our housing element update that we're looking at is affirmatively furthering fair housing. And this is something that you're going to see woven kind of throughout our document. This is, again, something that is coming down from the state, and they're asking us to examine our existing and future policies, our plans, our programs, our practices, and create meaningful actions and proactive changes that promote more inclusive communities. An essential component of our housing element update is to facilitate deliberate action to address, combat, and relieve the disparities resulting from past patterns of segregation. So you're gonna, you're going to be hearing this term, you're going to be seeing this concept, again, woven throughout our, our housing element update. And this is really an effort to diversify our housing stock, provide a variety of choices, so those that work here can also live here, if they so choose. There is a link here on this slide, where you can get more information on affirmatively furthering fair housing. And we also have a QR code here on the slide to a really good video. It's about 17 minutes long. If you're interested in learning more about this subject and the history, you can take a look at that. So some of the fair housing issues that we're going to be addressing in our housing element include, there are significantly lower proportions of racial and ethnic minorities in Carmel when compared to Monterey County and our region as a whole. Again, that's Monterey and Santa Cruz counties. And so why? What is the contributing factor for that? Well, we have a lack of a diverse housing stock. We are primarily single-family detached. Our multifamily housing stock is only 10%. And we have a lack of affordable housing. The other fair housing issue is a lack of affordable housing for special-needs groups. So again, that lack of a diverse housing stock means that we don't have adequate supply for those who have special needs. We don't have enough units for individuals with disabilities. And transitional and supportive housing, as well as emergency shelters, are also a type of housing that the state wants us to acknowledge in our housing element. The third fair housing issue is enforcement. And so the contributing factor here is really a lack of access to information about fair housing rights. There's a lot of good information out there, and there is, there is a need to really educate and provide access to that information. So we're working really hard on putting some additional information on our website, so we can be a resource for those who, who need that information. So in our six-cycle programs, we're going to improve upon the programs in our fifth cycle. We're going to update our municipal code to address the changes that have occurred in state law. We're going to look at expanding the variety of housing, both the type and size, within our community. And we're going to take action to try to increase and encourage housing development over the next eight years. So some of the programs for consideration, we'd love to get, you know, some of your, your feedback on, on these ideas as well. The first one is amending the A2 zoning district. This is essentially the Sunset Center property. And so we're looking at amending that zoning district to include development standards for senior housing. So senior housing is already allowed, under the municipal code, on that property, but we don't have standards. How tall, you know, can the building be? What are the setbacks for the building? So we're looking at amending the zoning district to include those development standards, to give developers more guidance on, on what could be developed there, as far as senior housing. We're also looking at potentially creating an affordable housing overlay zone in our commercial districts. And what this would do is establish a minimum required density of 33 dwelling units per acre. So what this does is, it encourages a little bit more density, which, again, helps get more affordable housing and more of a variety of unit sizes on properties. We're also looking at eliminating the use permit requirement for multifamily development, so streamlining our process, making it easier for, for developers to come in with proposals and get permits. Number four is creating a water distribution policy. And what this would do is prioritize water allocations to support our affordable housing goals. As most of you are probably aware, we are still under the cease and desist order, so we cannot set new water meters. And that goes for private development as well. So we're going to plan for these housing units, but in order for them to get constructed, there needs to be water. The city has a small amount of water in its, in its bucket. And so we're looking at creating a policy that would prioritize that water to support our affordable housing goals. And then number five is incentivizing hotel manager units with a bonus hotel room. And this is something that we've been talking about throughout our last couple community meetings, where we want to encourage hotels to look at providing onsite housing for their employees. And a way to incentivize that would be to allow them to have an additional hotel room in exchange for the employee housing unit. And so we'd be looking at potentially increasing our hotel room cap in order to enable that to happen. Some additional programs would be to augment our motel conversion development rights transfer program. This one, I think, we need to spend a little bit more time kind of looking into, but right now, the code does encourage the conversion of motels in the R1, the residential district, to single-family housing. So we're going to be looking at this process and see if there's a way that we can incentivize moving those hotel units out of their residential area, closer to the commercial area, and then replacing it with some higher-density housing. And I think a really good example of this is the Hazeltine Court development that is managed by the Carmel Foundation. It was, my understanding, it's been shared with me, that that used to be operated as a hotel, and then it was converted into senior housing and is now managed by the foundation. So that would be a model that we would look at a little bit closer and see if there's a way we can incentivize that. Another idea is to create pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans, and any other incentives to facilitate, facilitate ADU construction. So we really are looking for feedback from homeowners that might be interested in doing an accessory dwelling unit, and what would make it easier for you. Number eight, looking to adopt objective design standards for downtown affordable projects that produce new housing units. So many of you are aware that we have, we're in the middle of a design traditions process, where we're updating our residential design guidelines, as well as our commercial design guidelines. And so this is something very specific, that is looking at creating objective design standards for affordable housing projects. So this wouldn't, this isn't something that we're looking at that would apply to market-rate projects. But again, we're looking for ways that we can streamline the process to incentivize and encourage developers to build affordable housing in the community. And streamlining that process through removing the use permits, creating objective design standards, creates more certainty for developers and a greater likelihood that some units will be built. Number nine, establishing an affordable housing trust fund. And this is pretty straightforward, in the sense that it would be a fund that would be earmarked specifically to support affordable housing. You know, where those funds come from, how we collect them, those are all details that would, would need to be worked out, but it's an idea to consider. And then number 10 is developing an affordable housing oversight program. And really, what that is, is taking inventory of our housing stock, knowing where the rental opportunities are, and working closely, you know, with property owners, to see what we can do to convert existing space into housing. to see what we can do to convert existing space into housing and just be more of a resource for those who are interested in doing more housing. So moving into our sites inventory, we did print out a map and a list. This is all very, this is preliminary still, this is not set in stone. And again, those of you who may have been tracking with us from the beginning of last year, we started this effort working with a firm called Echo Northwest. And they came in, they walked the village with us, and they produced a report that identified seventeen potential sites downtown. And so our directive to them was really to focus on our commercial core to see what the development potential was in the downtown. And they produced a report that identified seventeen sites. These sites are included here on the map. And for consistency, they're still numbered one through seventeen. And then in addition, you see some sites that we added following the completion of that report. And then also some sites that, as we've been going through this update process, we've identified as having some potential. You'll notice that the majority of these are kind of in the commercial area. You know, we are aware that there are a number of vacant lots throughout the R1 district, and those could be included in the map as well. But looking at this core group, we were able to get to the number that we needed to and also have a buffer. So we could certainly add more units, but preliminarily, looking at these sites, this gets us to where we need to be. So again, just some quick background on how we arrived at this initial list of sites. We started with that Echo Northwest report. We looked at infill opportunities that are unique to Carmel. And this includes our single-story buildings downtown that might have the potential for a second-floor addition for housing. We looked at parking lots throughout the commercial area. Parking lots are generally seen as underutilized parcels. This doesn't mean that the parking would go away, but certainly parking can be integrated into a mixed-use project that could provide more housing. Again, the employee housing at local hotels is also a very unique strategy that we're looking to employ and have a discussion with the state about accessory dwelling units. And then also looking back at our fifth-cycle sites and seeing what's still available and what might be viable to carry forward into this new plan. So again, this exercise is identifying opportunity sites. The city will not be building housing on these sites. The city is not looking to take ownership of any property. What we're trying to do is come up with a housing plan that identifies opportunities that private developers can then come forward and build new housing to serve our village.
Marnie, can I jump in on that one? Because I want to add a very important point here. And I apologize for jumping in, but I think it's important to keep driving this home, what Councilmember Richards mentioned at the beginning. You know, we set off with the mission of not having to change any of the zoning in the city. And that's when we talk about, if you remember, we've said it a few times, changing the colors on the map, changing the underlying zoning and what that allows, meaning the intensity of use on the site. So what we're talking about when we talk about these programs is changing the municipal code. Some people know it as the zoning code, but really, it's the municipal code. It's the laws that the city operates under. And these programs and incentives, those would be implemented and put in place through changes to the zoning code or municipal code. So that's, that was the big, the big ask, is not to have to change what the land underneath all this property already can allow. So an effective way to think about it is that the land, as it exists right now, the way it's zoned, could support these units that we're talking about, the three hundred and forty-nine plus the buffer. So the task then is to, how do we get people to be excited about developing some of those units? That's where these programs and processes come in, and that's why we need to amend the municipal code to codify those things. So that's the difference between the zoning code and the zoning. I just wanted to add that, because we've talked about it a few times, but it's a very important difference between the two.
So just a quick overview of the initial seventeen sites, which are included on the map that you see this evening. Again, the Sunset Center, already zoned for senior housing. We're just looking to establish some development standards to help, you know, facilitate a potential future project. Alrica Plaza, you know, affectionately known as the pit. While that does not currently include any affordable housing, it will produce, you know, twelve market-rate apartments. And that's important, that's needed in the community, and it helps to diversify our housing stock. Other sites that we've looked at are the Public Works Site, Vista Lobos, which is the first picture in the top left that you see. We also looked at the Carmel Realty Site at Dolores and Eighth. And this is a single-story building surrounded by two-story buildings, and it has a very sizable parking lot. So we see this as an opportunity to do a second floor and introduce possibly some housing units, which is also like a transition area from the commercial into the residential. Other sites that are included are Bruno's Market, which is the bottom-left picture. Again, sizable parking lot. You know, what could, what could we potentially, you know, do with that as far as adding housing? We've named this site on Hunipero as the Three Garages Site because it has three detached garages, as well as a significant amount of asphalt. So these are kind of the underutilized, underdeveloped parcels that we're looking at for potential new housing development. We've made efforts to reach out to the property owners, we've sent out some letters. We have gotten some response, which is great. So we would love to hear from them and find out what level of interest that they have in potentially redeveloping their properties. Some of the other initial seventeen sites, we identified Cafe Carmel on Ocean Avenue. And this is really just an example of, again, a one-story building flanked by two-story buildings. And is there some potential there to put some housing units on top? The picture at the top right is the Wells Fargo Parking Lot, so we looked at that site. The picture at the bottom left is right next to Girl, Boy, Girl at Seventh and Mission. And then the picture at the bottom right is at Fifth and Hunipero. And again, this is a transition area into multifamily, so you've got two-story buildings surrounding it. So there's some potential there. So in this initial draft, so these, looking at these initial, these seventeen sites, as well as the other sites that you see on the map this evening, this is kind of a summary of what we've identified to date. So we've identified a total of thirty-five sites. It's a little over ten acres. Again, mostly within the downtown and the periphery of the downtown. We are taking, you know, a multi-pronged approach to our three hundred and forty-nine units. So we're not just looking at new construction, but we're also looking at conversion of space that already exists. And those are like second-floor offices. But we're also looking at accessory dwelling unit construction. So we're projecting that we could plan for seventy-two units over the next eight years. We think that that's realistic based on the current interest that we're seeing in accessory dwelling units. And then also the programs that we're looking at, again, to incentivize and support and make it easier to build those units. And then our other approach with the hotel conversion, we're estimating about forty-six units. And this is a very conservative, you know, one unit per hotel. Some hotels that are on the smaller side may opt not to do this. A larger hotel might decide, you know, two employee housing units would work well for them. So it's a multi-pronged approach. You know, in all told, the subtotal here, it shows a hundred and eighteen units. We're still kind of running some calculations on the thirty-five sites, but preliminarily, we're over the four hundred and nineteen that you see on the screen here. So three hundred and forty-nine units is our target. We are looking to include about a twenty percent buffer. So if we go to the state and they tell us that a site is not viable for some reason and it gets rejected, we do have some additional sites that can supplement for that, so we can still meet our three forty-nine. So right now, we're looking at a plan between three forty-nine and four hundred and nineteen units. And we've gotten there with the sites that you see on the map this evening. And as Brandon was saying, these sites are already zoned for housing. So this does not require that we change our zoning, up-zone, you know, do any kind of significant densifying. This is working within the existing character, within the existing built environment that we have, and making subtle changes that will produce much-needed housing. So as far as our timeline and next steps, we're really pressing forward quickly. We hope to release the complete draft of the Housing Element update in June. It will be out for thirty days so that the community can review and comment on that. About midway between, we're currently targeting June fifteenth, we are going to have a Joint Planning Commission and City Council workshop where we're gonna present the full draft of the Housing Element. We're gonna get feedback from the council, the commission, the public. And we're gonna be compiling all of these comments, making changes to the draft Housing Element before we submit it to the state for the initial review. In July, once we've collected all the public comments and are ready to submit to the state, we're gonna make one more trip to the City Council. We're gonna discuss what those public comments were. We're gonna provide some responses to those public comments and what in the document has changed based on those. And then we put it in the hands of the state, and we wait ninety days for them to complete their review and see how well we did on our first pass. We also have released a survey. So as, you know, part of this, part of this effort in gathering data and understanding the needs of the community, it's one thing, you know, we can collect data from the U.S. Census, from, you know, the state of California, but we also want to hear directly from the stakeholders in the community. So we've developed a survey that's intended to solicit input on what the community sees the needs are for housing. So these QR codes will take you to that online survey. It's in English as well as in Spanish. We're also going to be sending the survey out through a number of channels. So you might see it in a couple different places. You're gonna hear about it tonight, you will see it show up in the City Administrator's Friday Letter. You might see it on a flyer posted at the post office. We do ask that you take the time, it's a very brief survey, and give us your feedback and tell us what you think. So almost getting into closing here, I think I'm almost at my five minutes. Our illustrious ad hoc housing committee, here is the, you know, their contact information. You can reach out to them anytime with any questions, comments, feedback. Also, the staff contact information, please let us know if you have any questions. We also have two websites. The Home Carmel by the Sea is our dedicated website for the Housing Element update. We also have some information posted on the city's website regarding the project as well. So we just encourage you to stay involved. If you haven't done so already, please sign up for the housing email listserv. You can find that on our website. Keep an eye out for the Friday Letter, as well as the Carmel Pine Cone. We're using, you know, these existing resources to try to get the word out about these meetings and about the survey. Again, we will post the slides for tonight on our website. So please check it out and please take our survey. And thank you, thank you for coming. It's really encouraging to see such a great turnout tonight. We're looking forward to having a conversation and getting your feedback and all your wonderful suggestions. So thank you so much for coming tonight.
Marnie, that was terrific, Marnie. Congratulations. And now I think you can see why I'm so proud to be on this team. They have done an absolute stellar job on trying to be creative and find some solutions that will not impact the quaintness of our village. So Marnie, outstanding, all, the whole team, thank you. Maybe, Marnie, could you put up Slide fourteen? I think that might have some questions, people might have some questions about that. Because this is, this is part, this is sort of the main way that we're gonna get there, right?
Yes, so it's the programs that really support the development of future housing units.
Karen, did you want to?
Well, I'd just like to say that was a great overview, a lot of detail to understand. There are things in this PowerPoint that you can take home. And please, go to the HCD site, go to the video that's in a QR code. There's so much information that we have and are continuing to learn about in this process. It, there's lots of acronyms that you, once you get used to them. AFFH is the hardest one for me, A-F-F-H. But it is a very, very important part of this. And that video that is there in a QR code really does a lot to explain exactly where the state is coming from in requiring communities to look at furthering fair housing. Very, very important. So I hope you'll take the time to do that. And really, this is, this is almost a homework assignment for you as well, is to become more familiar with all the terms, become familiar with the programs we're considering, and ask questions and make comments about them. But that's, that's about it.
Thanks, Karen. Brandon, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm good, thank you. I think I'm excited for us to hear from the community and from our, you know, our other city officials and other, you know, folks who've joined us tonight.
Great, thank you. So that's where I'll open it up to the public comment. Everybody will have three minutes, if you can ask questions. We won't be able to answer them right on the spot, but we will write them down. And if we can get to them later tonight, we will. If not, they'll be posted on our website, the answers will be posted on the website. So with that, who's up?
Congratulations, it's an incredible presentation, very professional, very thorough. Thank you for having this town hall meeting. I spent forty-four years in elective office and, and part of it was, and growing up here in Carmel, what I noticed about living in Carmel back, living it now, with my old friend Mike Brown, is when we grew up, this was a town of children. All the property owners were parents, all the workers in the stores were parents. So everything in this town was about children. And we don't have any children anymore. And what really ticks me off is all these houses that are just empty. And I think you ought to find forces that you can have, whether it's an absentee fee. I think we had, other cities are looking at. You, one way to increase the stock of people living here is to get those houses that are empty rented and put disincentives for non-renting. The other thing, the history of this housing element's been around for a long time, but nobody's paid any attention to it until the legislature started saying, own up to your responsibilities. The reason it was developed, and I was involved in that process, is that we wouldn't allow cities and counties anymore to export their poverty, saying, we can't afford to have you here, you gotta go live somewhere else. No, every community has to be responsible for the sum total of its parts, and every community has low-income people. When I was on the Board of Supervisors, there were people on welfare living in Pebble Beach. And people said, well, they must be cheating. And I said, no, somebody's giving them a place to live, they still qualify for welfare. So it's, you know, you can't tell walking around the streets which house has, well, rich people or poor people in it. The incentives you can give, and one thing I'd recommend that you look at is don't do a hardcore limit. Make your designs fit aesthetics. Santa Cruz had a hardcore historic limit on their downtown. And then after the earthquake, when they went, the builders said, we can't build back at that height, we gotta go better. And they did exactly what you did. They took pictures and said, perhaps in this place, we can make it a little bit higher. Don't make it an absolute one or another. The other thing is you probably, excuse me for running out of time here, the, you might have some water alloc- you have a water allocation from the Water Management District. You also have a record from Cal-Am of- You also have a record from Cal-Am of uses. And all these absentee houses are not using any water. So that difference could be used for affordable housing. And the last thing is that the thing that develops, the developers complain the most about is the amount of fees. I've certainly been involved in creating a lot of, some of them I don't believe in at all, like the impact fee for schools. It's no fair that you have to charge senior citizens for school fees. But there are a lot of those. And I've got to make a list of every single fee you have to charge anybody in this town. Because you made them, you have the opportunity to waive them. And you'll find that fees aren't required by federal government. They're not required by state government. Fees are a local initiative, and it's essentially a way to capture revenue for the community. So if you're going to try to do some social good, you can waive those fees when appropriate. But I think stick to this is going to be hard. There may be a lot of opposition to it. But the state isn't going to allow exceptions. So, and all you have to do is get started. You don't have to meet all those numbers. You have a plan of how you can do it. Just start. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like?
I second all of that, Sam. And I urge you to enthusiastically, enthusiastically embrace this opportunity to do exactly what you've come up with. Because Carmel really needs it. And it didn't happen that Carmel turned out to be a wealthy, white, exclusive community by accident. It was purposeful. So having taught urban history for quite some time, it breaks my heart to see communities so unequal. And I think you have a beautiful opportunity to change that. And as a resident here, I embrace it. I live near the Sunset Center. I would love to see that made into a usable space and will completely support your efforts to do that. So go for it. Have courage and get this work done. It's so necessary. And there is really, really nothing to be afraid of, to have people of different groups moving to Carmel. It makes it a beautiful space. So thank you for all of this hard work. And I encourage you and urge you to keep going. There's a, there's a movement in California now called Yes in My Backyard. And I'd love to see us join that.
Can we get, can we get your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. Carol McKibben.
Thank you.
Hello. Nancy Toomey here, and thank you. This is a great report and love it, love all of it and appreciate all your efforts here. I have just one question that I'd like to get a little bit more insights if we could tonight. So as we queue up for the follow-on, it would be great. On this, item number two on this slide. I don't know what that would mean. What, what conceptually, you know, what does it look like? What would it allow or not allow? Or just, I mean, I realize it's not cast in stone, but if you could give me some idea about what that might mean, that would be great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that, because I had it written down on my sheet, too.
Well, and this is a learning, this is a learning process for all of us. Bobby and I have learned a lot and Steph has learned a lot. So thank you for that.
Hi, you guys. My name's Ashley Stoddard. First of all, I would like to thank you all for all of this hard work, all of the research that you've done, all of the consideration and the character of our village and the character of our businesses and our communities that we live in. I know being an artist in this town and a gallery owner, many of our artists cannot afford to live in this town. And that is the very, in my opinion, heartbeat of, of where this town was really rooted from. Another thing that I have thought a lot about, I'm pretty passionate about affordable housing and diversity. I think that that's what makes a community, and we do lack it. I have kids that, that live in the community and go to Carmel High School and all of those different things. But I would like to see more of a social, economic, and age difference in our community personally. I, I have it in my neighborhood, but I know that it doesn't exist in all neighborhoods. A really great read that I've just read recently is called Billionaire Wilderness. And it is a five-year study of the Teton Wilderness, which is the most affluent area in the United States. It's written by a Yale professor. And it talks about how the social, economic, and environmental scale has been, has been completely slid off balance. And it's parallel to the community that we live in so many different ways. And so I encourage anybody that wants to read something like that. It's a really good read. But it shows, it shows that when you have, you don't have a middle class in a community and it's either poverty or it's extreme affluence, then, and then that affluence takes over and makes the nature and everything about the community that's beautiful exclusive, it really kind of throws everything off. So anyways, I just want to say I appreciate you guys. I'm sorry that I haven't been able to attend many meetings because they're when I'm working. But this is wonderful that I could attend tonight. And I loved hearing and seeing all the data. Thank you all for all of your hard work and for really caring about this community.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm David O'Neill, and I am so grateful. Thank you so much for putting sense to all of this. Because I think there was a lot of fear in a lot of minds and hearts about trying to preserve, you know, the beauty and the wonder of Carmel that has been preserved for so long. And it sounds like you've got a really good plan to be able to incorporate this new housing and bring new people into the environment and still protect what has been protected for so long. I was talking with Councilmember Ferlito about the, the issue of affordability. Because I look at it from an investor's point of view. How do you buy expensive land and put affordable housing? And she was saying that there was a lot of resources out there. And so I've been doing research. And one of the things that I'm researching is Habitat for Humanity. One of the things I love about Habitat for Humanity is that it actually helps people own homes. So it's, it's a really great opportunity. I'm going to be participating with them in bringing more of their work into our area because they're based out of Santa Cruz, but they want to do more work here in the Monterey Peninsula. If anybody is interested in learning more about their move down here, you can go to habitatmontereybay.com. Or you can email me at david underscore o'neill at ymail dot com. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Anybody else have any questions out there for any of these ideas or?
Hi, Tim Toomey. A great presentation, Marnie, and your, and your team. Thank you very much for putting that together. So I just have a question. I don't know if you can put this together for us, but the sheet that shows the 35, you know, specific units or locations. I know you've got probably some estimates within, you know, how much would, would, what capacity would be for each of these sites. Is there any way you can give us a little bit more detail? Do you have that yet or so, so we could? Yeah, that'd be awesome. Okay, thank you.
If nobody has any other questions, I think we can probably handle the ones that were asked.
Zoom land.
Was there any, is there anybody in Zoom?
We, we do have a couple of hands up in Zoom. Let's start with Vivian Price.
Hi, I finally found the passcode. They looked at enter the Zoom. I missed the beginning. First of all, I just want to thank you for doing this work. I think it's not only something that the state is compelling to do, but it's something that we should embrace. And I see that that seems to be your intention. Is there an echo?
No, you're doing great. Keep going.
All right, so just briefly, I think this is really important. I echo the previous speaker's comments about how much we would benefit from having a more diverse community, having people who work here, be able to live here. I think it's, it's, it's critical. Well, I don't know if you talked about water. I heard one comment about water, but I wonder how you're going to handle that and would be interested in seeing that fleshed out. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got Libby Barnes. If you want to unmute yourself, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, everyone. I had two comments. One about ADUs. Unless you can guarantee that a homeowner will rent their ADU versus use it for personal use, I don't see how that can contribute to the RENA target. The other thing that I'd like to mention is, you know, a 50% vacancy is huge and it has an impact on our community in a variety of ways. And so, you know, we need to attract full-time homeowners and renters. And I believe a vacancy tax is, should be required or should be proposed to the voters, which can go towards funding affordable housing. And the city needs to frame affordable housing in a positive way. I feel like people's aversion to affordable housing in their communities is just a public relations failure. And I'm not saying Carmel, I'm talking about across the country. So great presentation, Marnie. And I, I support the council's efforts at creating more affordable and multifamily housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got Cindy Lloyd.
Thank you very much. My name is Cindy Lloyd, and I am a native of Carmel and a classmate of Sam Fars. And when we grew up in Carmel, yes, it was a community of everybody working and whether we were, our parents were working in town or out of town. The police force all lived in town. But that's all changed. And I applaud Marnie's presentation, which was not only extraordinarily professional, but it was very, very informative. And my intention is to learn more about it. I don't have any solutions or any ideas yet, but I just wanted to say thanks so much.
All right, we've got Neil. Go ahead, Neil. Neil, are you there? See, you're unmuted. Neil has come back. Okay, unmuted still, Neil. Go ahead and speak. We, we can't hear you if you're talking right now. Okay, we've got another hand up. Maybe we'll, we'll come back to you, Neil. We'll try again. So I'm going to mute you. And then Jim Zach, why don't you go ahead and unmute yourself?
Hi, good afternoon. Wonderful presentation. I'm a Carmel, Carmel native, but I've been gone for close to 40 years and I'm working my way back. And I'm an architect and I'm a builder and I'm an advocate of increased density and, and building housing of all types. And I'm curious if there's any discussion around simplifying the approval process for these 300-odd units that you want to build. I work mostly in the Bay Area, but I've done work in Carmel. I have projects there now. And the approval process is so burdensome for just about anybody doing about anything that to encourage the development of more housing, you should also be looking at the approval process and ways to streamline that. Thank you.
I think Neil's back.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, let's, let's try Neil again. Neil, why don't you go ahead and give it another shot?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
It helps to plug in your device.
I know this is your first time doing this, Neil, so it's okay.
It is. I'm a little nervous, Brandon. Wonderful job. Every, I mean, the work that must have gone into this. And this is really, I didn't know how you were going to do it, but now that I see it, I do understand. And so I do want to compliment everybody on getting this done, making it available to the public. Good presentations, a lot of wonderful effort to do this. And at the same time, I don't like any of this, you guys. I come from a Carmel where we make up our own mind what happens in Carmel. Now, I understand we're going to do the plan because if we don't do the plan, we get punished and the state's going to take away our rights to issue permits, okay? So why all of this tyranny seems so appealable to everybody is just stunning to me. As we speak, the state of Carmel is getting ready to make housing a right, a constitutional right. Anybody who graduated from high school civics class knows you, you don't make rights out of things. If you make a house is a right, pretty soon, a Mercedes is a right. Pretty soon, $100,000 a year is a right. So they're operating unconstitutionally. They're, they're bonkers with where they're going with this. This is tyranny. And, and you know, I was, I was listening. I was trying to be really open and, and fascinated at the work that was done here. But this strikes me as all wrong. What I was hearing in this meeting just for a minute, it wasn't a housing plan. Suddenly, I was hearing, this is the future of Carmel. Let's call up the state and see what they want us to do this month. Maybe they want more liquor stores. Maybe they want more wine stores. Maybe they want more, from here on in, baby, it ain't us designing our city. You just call the state and you ask them what you want us to do. So again, I am not complaining about the issue of we have to do the plan. I understand that, not objecting. And I think this is a really good start on that. Congratulations. But I am not going to sit here and say that this is a wonderful thing. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else out in Zoom or here?
I don't see anybody else on Zoom. Last chance, if you're out there. If you're on your computer, there's a little button to raise your hand or you can just unmute yourself. Or if you're on your phone, you can hit star six and unmute yourself. Here we go. We've got to hand up VE Beach. I'm guessing this is Victoria Beach.
That's right. Good guess, Brandon.
Thanks.
Hold on. Let me see if I can get the video going. Well, first I wanted to thank Jim Zach for his question about streamlining. I, I don't think I'd heard about these objective design standards before, but that strikes me as a terrific idea. And I'm looking forward to seeing what that, how that evolves. And then I also had a question. I know, Bobby, you said you're going to write these down and stuff, but I really, I have had a few conversations with housing experts who have looked at downtown Carmel and noted the very small size of the lots, which is no, no insight there, but just that what that means for density in the Carmel commercial district. If, so the question is, I've heard a different number than 33 dwelling units per acre as a way, as something that's viable for getting the results that you want. So I just, I don't know how to ask the question. I, I'm hoping that someone can maybe, maybe here's how to say it. Give an example or two or three. And this is my question. Could the council or the staff give an example or two or three of what a typical downtown lot could fit in at 33 dwelling units per acre? Because my understanding is that our lots are so small that you end up with half, half-units and things like that. So if we could decide, see, test that number and see if it works for our teeny-weeny lots or if there's something, other, another number we need to use. And again, I think the comfort for the town should be that this, these objective design standards and, you know, the, the layout of the volumes that are permitted and the fact that those won't deviate from what we already have should make folks comfortable that the character and look and feel of the downtown does not need to change to do that, even if that density units per acre, dwelling units per acre number has to change. And thank you, of course, for all the, the great work. It's, it was the best presentation yet. Good job, Marnie and Brandon.
Thank you, Victoria. Carol.
Carol Hall. Again, thank you. Wonderful presentation. I feel relieved, which is a good sign. I think that generally speaking, though, local control is what I see as more important than the state telling us what to do. Generally speaking, I think we need to do exactly what you're doing. Look at all of this. Go ahead with what the state is mandating. But at the same time, really try and retrieve our local control so that we can, you know, have more housing, whatever, have more mixed use and, and all that's good stuff. But to be able to do it locally and to maintain the character of Carmel, I think that's really important, that we maintain the special nature of what we have here. No matter what color of people are here, what levels of, you know, religious, anything. We want to become diverse, more diverse, I think, than we are right now. But, but we can do that and still maintain what's special about Carmel. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else? Because we can start answering some of these questions.
Sure. Marnie, do you want me to? Do you want me to answer questions? Do you want to answer questions? How do you want to do this?
Maybe you can explain, right, right off the bat, you can explain bullet number two on slide 14.
Sure. Well, that's, that was the first question from Nancy Toomey. I'll tell you what, Marnie, I'll start. And then when I say something stupid, you look at me and you take over, okay? All right. So question number two came from Nancy. So question number two came from Nancy Toomey. It was about creating, what does this mean basically? Creating an affordable housing overlay zoning district? So first of all, let's think of it practically. What does that mean? Think about basically drawing a box or some sort of shape on that map back there. So this would be an outline of an area where this rule would take place. And remember what I said earlier, that this is not a rezoning, this is creating a rule in our municipal code that says when you're within this box, here's what happens. And what this means is what would happen when you want to build something on like our second story commercial district, you're building residences up there, you're required to have a minimum of 33 dwelling units per acre. And a simple way to think about that is right now, you could have a commercial building in the downtown area and just build one mega apartment upstairs because we don't have a requirement for a minimum density. What this will do, if it becomes a policy and a program, the municipal code will say when you're inside of this box in the commercial district and you want to build an apartment upstairs, you have to have a density of this, which means that one mega apartment turns into maybe three smaller apartments. They don't have to necessarily be deed restricted for affordability, but by design, affordability by design, they become more affordable because they're smaller and we get more units in the village. So that's the concept behind an overlay or a district or a box like this. Again, not changing the zoning, changing the rules of how things are built in the municipal code. How'd I do?
Brandon, can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
So I think there might be something going on in town right now where somebody's taking three apartments and making one. Do you know about that? Has that come across your desk?
I don't know off the top of my head. Yeah.
So that's something that could happen right now. Somebody could take three apartments on one story and make one penthouse apartment. And that's what we would discourage with this.
Yeah, we would basically be encouraging people to take large spaces and turn them into more units. That's really what it's all about. So that was the first question from Nancy Toomey. I'll just run through the questions, I guess, and people can holler if you have questions as we go along. The second question was from her worst half, Tim Toomey. You know, I love you, Tim. The question was, can we get more detail on the numbers in the sites? And I think, Marnie, you said yes, right? We actually have that. The question was, we talked about these sites, do we have more detail about the actual numbers of units they can produce? We do have that. I think that'll be available on our website. It's going to be out in the draft and all that stuff. So we'll get that to everybody so they can see what's going on there. Vivian Price asked a question, how are we going to deal with water? That is an excellent question. You know, you heard Congressman, former Congressman Farr stand up and say that there are ideas out there right now about how to deal with water. Initially, when all of these housing numbers came out and jurisdictions started pushing back or saying to the state, which by the way, the water is also regulated at the state level, what are we going to do about water? The answer is, well, this is an eight-year cycle. So we are just going to assume, we being the everybody at the state level, we are just going to assume that over that eight-year period, water will become available. So that's really the answer we've got from the state is just make a plan so that when water is available, you know how to act. So at the exact moment that we're sitting right now, we do have an allocation at the city of 2.66 acre feet of water that we have in a bucket, as Marnie said, that's city-owned. We can do with it as we please from a policy level. So that's, you know, for the city council to decide how we do that, how we parse that out. That may come through some of these programs, but over and above that, we don't have any water to allocate. And we are currently under a cease and desist order for setting new water meters in the area. So there is a lot of restrictions right now with respect to water, but our task was to plan for when water becomes available because that's what we need to do. So that was the water question. What's that? That's a policy decision, absolutely, that, you know, if we want to see housing get built, then we, the city council will look at how to prioritize the relatively small amount that we have right now. And when new water comes available, look at how to prioritize that for housing. The next question came from Libby Barnes. How do ADUs contribute to the low cost? That was also a very good question. We won't be looking at restricting, like deed restricting for affordability ADUs. What has happened in other areas and the state HCD has signed off on this is that ADUs, again, the affordability by design, are smaller typically. And oftentimes what you see is that someone will have a relative or a friend or someone just basically living in it for free or extremely cheap and it's sort of, you know, call it off the books in a way. It's not through a housing program. So what the state does is they look at the ADUs on the whole and think, okay, a certain percentage of these, because maybe nobody's paying any rent at all, maybe someone's paying no rent at all in these, they sort of balance out the whole equation. So some of them count as very low, some of them count as low, some of them count as moderate and some of them count as above market rate. So even though it may be counterintuitive, they do actually count towards our total of affordable units. They cannot be rented as short-term, that's a state law when you have an ADU. So we don't have to worry about them being rented out and people making a bunch of money off of them as short-term rentals. So we know that they're part of the housing stock.
Mom, get out of my room!
Uh-oh. Thanks, Sebastian. All right. Looks like somebody was trying something fancy there. Anyway, that's basically it. They are, they are part of the housing stock, they do contribute to it, those factors I was talking about, you know, affordability by design and the fact that people do live in them rent-free. So in the scheme of things, there are people that are getting an affordable place to live. Jim?
Can I add something?
Please, yeah.
Well, I was just going to say, could you bring up number, the next slide?
And I wanted to have you explain the difference between a JADU and an ADU because there's two sizes, shapes of this. And some are absolutely an opportunity for someone to do it on a less expensive basis if they do it within their home, so.
Yes, thank you, councilmember. Yeah, so a JADU is what's known as a junior accessory dwelling unit and ADU is an accessory dwelling unit. A JADU, think of it as you're basically turning a bedroom in an existing house into a unit that now has an exterior door and it can share the services of the main house. So it can share a kitchen, it can share a bathroom, but it has its own exit. So it can almost be, you know, like you've got your college-aged kid or, you know, a senior parent or someone that's going to live in your house, but it's somewhat independent. They have their own door, maybe they have a hot plate in there, but it's within the overall footprint of the main dwelling. That's a JADU. And it has to be 500 square feet or less. An ADU is the larger version of that. It's either attached or detached to the main house, but the key difference is that it's a separate, independent living facility, meaning that it has its own kitchen and it has its own bathroom. So that's the big difference and it can be bigger than the 500 square feet. And so that's, that's the main difference is how they, how they're used and how they're, how they operate.
And right now, we are in the process of refining an ordinance for ADUs in the city and that will be out soon. But I did want to mention, AARP has a tremendous livability resource center. And anyone, you don't have to be a member of AARP or 55 years old in order to get these, but you can go to the AARP site and they have all kinds of things like Making Room for a Changing America, which talks about all the different kinds of needs, like a grandmother raising a grandchild, a grandmother that needs to live in the house, all kinds of things about making room. Because we are not a nation anymore of large families. We have a lot of single-parent families. We have a lot of grandparents raising children and so on. So this has tremendous resources and they will send you the documents or you can download them. The other one I'd like to tell you about is the ADU dwelling units. And this is just a world of knowledge about all the different sizes and shapes of ADUs. And they're very, they're very good resource for people who have the room or want to have part of their property available for an affordable or an accessory dwelling unit. So AARP and their livability series, and they have lots of booklets that you can send for.
And I think you told me you don't have to be a senior to get those books. Is that right?
No, you don't. And they have the ABCs of ADUs and they have a handbook for improved neighborhoods. They have one that's called The Missing Middle Housing that's really very interesting because we have, some cities have great big housing things and single family, but they're missing that middle housing. And, you know, we don't have such a thing in Carmel anymore as a starter house, which at one point we did in communities. So it's, I have found it very educational to really start to delve into the different kinds of housing and the different needs. A teacher at Carmel High School, a single teacher, might just like a studio so they could walk to work. I mean, we don't all need to live in a two or three or four-bedroom house. There are people who like living in smaller spaces or that's what is available to them, so.
So the reason why I had you, asked you to bring up this slide was number 10, develop a city-managed affordable housing oversight program. I think that we will be needing something like that with, with bringing in these affordable units, they do have to be monitored to make sure the right house is going to the right person. So that will be something that we're going to have to address is establishing something like this. And somebody, at the same note, could also look after the STRs that shouldn't be here or these types of things. So that's going to be an important component to this program.
And that's, that's when the city council will graciously give my department four new employees. Just kidding. No, it's a great point, though. Someone has to manage it and, you know, a good example of management of housing is the Carmel Foundation. They manage all of their housing, they report the affordability, they income verify every year. And that's, that's the big part of when you do have true affordable housing is you have to, you have to be on it. You have to manage your stock and you have to understand what's out there. So there will be a need for that.
Thank you.
And Brandon, could you answer this question? Did the city build the Carmel Foundation housing?
We did not.
So we did not build any of that affordable housing that exists in our town. And one of the reasons these mandates may be coming down from the state is most towns didn't build the affordable housing that they actually needed. They exported it somewhere else. And when they exported it, they often exported it out into farmland, out into the unincorporated areas. And when you do export your housing, that then results in requiring fire departments, police departments, libraries, schools, et cetera, that don't always come with that development. So it's, it, you know, it's time for us to be responsible for the affordable housing that we need in this town. We have lots of jobs that are low-paying and that would be helpful if people could live closer to their work.
Was there any other questions?
Two more questions on the list here. I think, I think I'm going to get them all. So the next question came from Jim Zach and the question was, is there any possibility of streamlining the process? And the answer there is an emphatic yes. I mean, we realize that we have a process here in the city of Carmel by the sea. And some of that and most of that honestly is for a very good reason. I mean, the village looks and feels the way it does and it's not by accident. People say that all the time. But if we, as a, as a city, want to prioritize housing, then we need to know when we need to get out of our own way. And so we are going to make sure that there's still, you know, plenty of controls in the way to make sure that, you know, the housing or anything that gets built here still looks and feels the way it's supposed to and doesn't, doesn't disrupt the charm and character of the city. But there are things that we can do to help streamline that process, even just to give priority to any sort of housing project. So the answer to that question is absolutely, Jim. Yes, we are going to be looking at ways, that's part of our programs, is to figure out ways to streamline the overall process. And then the last question came from Victoria Beach. She asked for an example of what a typical downtown lot could fit with 33 units per acre. I don't know if we have that calculation. Marnie shaking her head, yes. Okay, I'm throwing the mic over to Marnie on this one. Take it away, Marnie.
I mean, what better example than a real one?
Oh, thanks.
Right? So, you know, the lot sizes downtown do vary. So I'm not sure, you know, when we say a typical lot, what we're talking about size, but we have a 4,000-square-foot lot on Dolores, south of Ocean. It's a historic building. It's vacant right now, but Jean Deluse used to be in that building, if you're familiar. That property has an approved application to add three housing units and the density is 33 dwelling units to the acre. Boom. So.
Did you just, did you just, mic dropped, housing? That was great. Good job, Marnie.
So it can be done and it is being done. And it's, it's being done on a property that actually has a historic building. So imagine if there wasn't a historic building there, we could get instead of, you know, three new apartments, we could probably get four or five. So there's your real-life example.
And I think an important thing to add to that, thank you, Marnie, I knew you'd know the answer to that. I think the important thing to add to this is that the, you know, the overlay, the housing overlay is a floor, it's not a ceiling. So we can go up to 88 units per acre. So if someone wants to develop in the downtown area, they can go to 88 units per acre if they choose. But the idea with the affordable housing overlay is that's the floor. You can, you would no longer be able to take the entire top floor of a building and make a mega apartment for yourself. You'd have to have your three units at least a bare minimum, so just a floor.
Okay, well, is that it? Do we have anything to add?
I think we answered all the questions that came up through. Did you guys, Marnie or Anastasia, do you have any other questions you targeted?
Councilman Barron, do you have any, did you have any questions?
I do know, it was a great presentation. Thank you all, especially thanks, Marnie and Brandon, but especially Marnie for.
Especially Marnie.
Especially Marnie.
So, well, with that, we can adjourn and great job. Thank you so much.
Please take our survey.